It's five P. It's five oh two P. M. We're gonna get um, thank you for to open us up in prayer. And also too guys, we have a um, signing sheet going around because we do have um, two public hearings tonight. So just make sure everybody um, sign, signs up.
Father God, thank you for this wonderful day of weather you've given us, Lord. We thank you for the crowd that we have tonight, Lord. We ask you to keep your hands upon them, keep your hands upon the council members. Let us make the best decision, Lord, for our community. Let us have a sound mind and a clear understanding of what's going on tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
Alright guys, and I do ask that everybody be patient with us. We did have a um, it's gonna be a little bit different tonight, a little um, change in order. We do have a long work session. So it'd kind of be like a few weeks ago when we had to um, start the council meeting to do the public hearings and then reconvene the work session. So it will be um, one of those nights tonight, so just bear with us. Alright, the um, first thing on our work session agenda is discussion by Leah Allen with A R C regarding Sunshine Saturday. That's gonna be held on May eleventh. Hey Leah, how are you today?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank y'all so much for everything that y'all do for the ARC. Uh, as I look in this room, I see so many people that I talk to daily and help me out at the ARC and help us out at the city. But I just wanted to tell everybody that this is our fiftieth year in Silicaca. Um, that's a big deal because I'm only thirty-eight. So it's a huge deal that it's been around this long. And so um, we would just love to have everybody out at Bluefield Park this Saturday from nine to three.
Thank you so much Leah, I know Sunshine Saturday is one of the oldest traditions that um, I can remember as a kid. And we do appreciate you guys for keeping that going. If there's ever anything, you know, we can do to help this one, nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, number two um, on the list is um, E A R P V C will host a senior adult trip on May ninth at the um, International Motorsports Hall of Fame Speedway, Willmore, Talladega, Alabama. Coosa Valley Healthcare has requested SAFE utilize one um, van to transport residents to the Senior Day, to Senior May Day. No overtime will be incurred and I know SAFE couldn't be here tonight and Alex is gonna brief us on that. Oh, did somebody? I'm sorry, I gotta get my new prescription for my glass. You wanna come and brief us on this, I know?
Just give us a moment.
This event is an annual event sponsored by East Alabama. Uh, where you have seniors from all over the state that come together to celebrate on this Senior Day. The nursing home has asked us to transport some of their residents that day. Uh, we'll pick up approximately eight o'clock in the morning. Uh, the ceremony starts about nine fifteen. Uh, and we should be returning between one and one thirty that afternoon. Uh, there's no overtime involved, but on required one van. And they do pay a normal fare uh, as usual to be transported.
Alright, well, thank you so much for that update Pastor Charson. I hope you guys have a um, have a good time. You're gonna come back and update us on um, anything that's exciting that happens. And the next thing um, which is gonna keep you at the podium, because the next thing is um, SAFE as well is a discussion necessary regarding additional funds needed due to the cost increase in the amount of seven hundred eighty-four dollars to the E A R P V C for a van by SAFE. Original cost in spring twenty twenty-three was ninety-two thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars. Match was eight twenty. Silicaca paid eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. Silicaca responsible for insured the van.
As a reminder, Ms. Nix, I called you last Thursday because we had to have the decision by Friday um, whether or not we wanted to um, allocate the funds of seven hundred and eighty-four dollars uh, for this van. I did coordinate with SAFE um, and yourself regarding this.
And she did reach out to me guys and I looked at the amount and instead of trying to call a special meeting, it's something we had to go ahead and do. I did tell Alex to go ahead and um, allocate these um, that seven hundred eighty-four dollars.
Yes. We wrote the check, we've already mailed it. Um, and we have the resolution, it's fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four.
Thank you Alex. Alright, number four is being uh, removed, so next on the agenda is number five, discussion by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding computer capital purchase.
Alright, so we're on take two, which is fine. So what we did last time was we presented um, quotes to the tune of thirty thousand dollars for computers and laptops for the city of Silicaca, not for anyone specific to Portland. Um, you guys asked us to go back and relook at the quote and see if we could um, trim the fat, pretty much. Um, and we did that. Um, sat down with the um, interim chief of police, Cassie, the mayor, um, and two different reps. So we do have four quotes which were included in your um, packets on the computer. Um, so a lot of that thirty thousand dollars is setup fee. We did remove all mouse mises, we did remove all those. We removed all monitors, we removed all keyboards. Um, because people can reutilize the ones they already have, there's nothing wrong with them. So um, right now, we are also looking at saving money by changing I T companies. And if we do that, we save approximately forty dollars per hour, not just for this setup fee, but to run the I T program for the city. Um, so we have nine computers right now that are somewhere between two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen's and those are the ones we'd like to replace. Um, the P D would require two. The animal shelter, as you're aware, she's requesting one. Uh, the shop, he has a two thousand sixteen. A and F would need three and N and L needs one.
And for each computer that we're asking to be, um, how many of those computers that we're asking to be replaced that we're gonna be able to reference into another um, department, Alex?
Um, none of those. However, what we would do is the P D's asking for two because they're using, their interim chief is using a two thousand fifteen and their training sergeant's using a two thousand sixteen. So what we would like to do is take their training sergeant one and reallocate that monitor um, in the desktop to the fire department. And I've already spoken with Chief Osgood. And we're gonna take the one from the fire department and reallocate it back to the fire department because they don't need Microsoft, Office, Word, anything. They just need the tower to set up TV screens to advertise to their constituents and people.
Okay, so let me ask this, so depending on which, which one we agreed to go with, how many computers will be left over? Because we don't wanna have some fairly new computers left over that aren't being used.
Right, we would have three left over. Um, two in my office, which we would reallocate. Um, one in my office is using a two thousand fifteen and that's Ben Baker. He's using it to manage the I, or the HVAC for this, this building. Um, so we would take one of our newer laptops, not necessarily the brand new one, because that's all he uses it for. We would reallocate him to twenty twenty and then the one that's in the department would get the new one.
Okay, I'm just trying to, and the reason I'm asking is I don't wanna, we don't wanna buy all these new computers and then we still have these fairly new computers that aren't being used because we may can bring the number down by buying two or three less.
Right, and what we did was-
To those in a rotation.
Right, we're trying to keep the P D's within the P D. Anything extra, the same thing with the shop and the fire department. Um, I've gotten with each department head, um, and for instance, the fire department, they're just gonna get a new one and reuse the one they have. The police department, um, I coordinated with the department head for that department. He's gonna do the same thing. The shop, I coordinated with Ed Ford and they have one computer designated for everybody um, other than him and his secretary. And he's going to reutilize the one he has. So we're not going to be wasting computers. They're just gonna be reallocated to people who don't necessarily need a brand new one.
Or the two one one.
Right, and we did coordinate with the board.
So, break this, Alex, break this down for me, okay? I think I've got it, but I wanna make sure I got it. You've got, how many computers that you want to replace?
Nine.
You wanna replace all nine that need to be better two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, correct?
No sir, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Okay, alright, and you wanna do that with how much money?
We are asking for nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Okay, and that's trimmed down from thirty?
Yes sir.
Okay, and that's gonna come out, that if we agree to that, that will come out as a capital, correct?
That's correct.
That's a capital improvement.
Yes sir.
Okay, now I know I'm not the brightest crayon in the box, but I can cover the lines a little bit. Um, I, I won't say I like this idea because it's, it had, you have run it down from thirty to nineteen and working at school and some other places that I work at, slow computers kinda dictate of our workday. So um, I li, I like the idea guys, maybe put it on next agenda and um, to be voted on. And then in October, maybe there's some others that need to be, you could add it on. Now that's just my personal opinion.
Well, the goal is to um, start upgrading and then get in a rotation. So we're not having to buy so many at one time.
So since you spoke of the uh, rotation, I want to make the council aware that in two thousand nineteen, which is the next set of computers, the city purchased thirty-five at one time.
And that's what we're trying to get out the habit of doing.
What was the cost then for all thirty-five?
I'm unaware of that.
But when that time comes, we, we wouldn't have to replace all thirty-five.
No.
So Alex, my next question is, the nineteen thousand, does that include the programming? But that's separate, right? How much is it, how much is there gonna be a one-time cost in that to switch over the programming?
Um, it's, if we stick with our current I T company, it's seven hundred forty dollars per computer. If we go with the new company, it's gonna be five hundred eighty dollars per computer.
Is there like a one-time overall cost for installation or anything?
There's not, it's four hours is the average. Um, and it's either at one forty-five an hour or one eighty-five depending on what company we're using.
And that's added on to the nineteen?
No sir, that includes the nineteen and that's the current company we're using now.
So it could be cheaper?
It would be cheaper once we changed over I T. Um, and we actually have a meeting on Thursday.
And we're not in a um, any situation to where we have to buy the old contract, right? For the I T?
You will be, yes.
So how much is that gonna be if we have to buy that contract? Or how much, how much time is left on that contract? Because it'd be, is it, is it-
There is a buyout, but it's going to be a cost savings in the end. Because right now, we currently pay a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour and we're gonna go to two hundred ten. The new company's gonna be one forty-five and we're gonna lock that in for five years.
I know, but how, how, how much time is left on the old contract?
It's uh, I think June, Nicole?
Of this, of this year?
Yes.
Okay, so-
It's not that long.
So don't, you don't think we should just, just not renew the contract? Instead of just buying out the next couple of months? We're just gonna, we're just gonna write this out, right, and then not renew and start?
Right, we have to get with them and find out when it's sure it's June of this year and not June of next year.
Okay, yeah, just so you know, because we don't, I mean, there's no sense in buying it out when we can just write it out the next few months, if that makes sense.
These computers, so?
Yeah.
Because we can't, we, we don't have the ability to do the set. But, but my thing is, would the buyout be less than paying them the setup costs for nineteen, or nineteen P. D.? You get what I'm saying?
I do, but see, we're, we're planning on doing that anyway, but I'm saying-
Then we pay for the setup of the new company and a lot of the old contracts.
Just let us know Alex and then we can um, put this on um, the next agenda so it can um, it can be voted on.
We can send an email, um, once we confirm the date and we're being honest.
So far as I, so I got one more, as far as I, the I T department, that's kind of what we're handling here. Does, does each department handle their own I T or who does I T here for us?
I do, sir.
Okay.
There's nobody tasked in the city that does it. Um, it's just always falling to the city clerk's office.
That's just something the city clerk's office has absorbed and done?
Yes sir, it's not in anybody's job description, if that's what you're asking.
That's worth giving to them, thanks.
Right now, there is one way of contacting each department, emailing me. And then I get a hold of I T because if everybody was calling the I T people themselves, our bill would be astronomical.
I understand.
Um, for something in the police department, once I'm notified, I normally contact either the captain or Renee Cummings and normally they can fix the mistakes.
Good.
Cassie has graciously been helping as well with the first and second floor. Um, but if we need something beyond that and they need to work remotely, then we send an email.
So looking into the future, if we hire an I T professional, would that pay off in the long run versus paying these fees, per hour fees to these outside companies?
No, the current company we are proposing to go to, that would be included as part of your study.
Alright, so any um, any more questions on this, Lee, Laura?
Just how long of a contract are you signing this work?
Five.
Five.
To keep it at a rate of one forty-five an hour instead of going to two ten. Um, when I took over, we were at about one twenty-five an hour and we're all the up to twenty-five.
Alright, so we're good on that one, y'all?
Yes.
Alright, so um, the next one, number six, is um, discussion um, by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert to review the special event business license checklist. I don't know if you guys remember at the last meeting, um, I, we asked Alex, was there a specific checklist for people who wanted to have special events in Silicaca to where they can, kinda like a guide that they could go by to make sure that all the Ts had been crossed and the Is had been dotted to make sure these um, events go off without a um, without any problem. So Alex did um, get that document created. I think it's pretty cool, so people can come by, pick it up, they know everything they need to do, they know who all of it is going to be seen. And also with this, there's um, there will be a copy of all the um, vendors in Silicaca that already have business license. So say when people say they wanna have events in Silicaca, they already know who has license. So if this person comes and say, hey, I wanna be a part of, they're not part of the list, they know to send them down to the city clerk's office to get a business license, if that makes sense.
This is good stuff. Alex, thank you for getting this, don't make a lot of headaches. Absolutely. You and your office do a good job.
We also, thank you, we also um, role play, we had our new person who's only been here about two weeks go in and act like she was a business license person and ask all sorts of questions um, to our business license clerk and our other accounting clerk to make sure that if there was any questions, it was covered on here. Um, so we didn't know if you guys had had time to review it, because it was also included in your packets.
I think you did well, thanks.
And we will, once you guys review this and say it's okay, we've got plans on starting to implement it and giving it when people come in.
Is something we have to vote on?
No sir, this is just more of an information because you guys have asked us to do this.
I say, start getting down.
And then-
I agree, but please, you have a chance to go?
He's, he's, he's right, he's on the comment. Laura, you want, you gotta say, you wanna say something, any comments while Lee is getting prepared his comments?
Um, I'm, I'm still, you know, with the Parks and Rec, we're in now the facilities, you know, I, I still, the special event license, like the A R C and other people who are hosting events at the Parks and Rec's facilities, it's just kinda, I don't understand why they have to come before us as well.
Because if, because if you-
We just started this, so like I just want to make sure that it's fair across the board.
I don't think we just started, I think we've just gotten a little bit more aggressive with um, implementing it. So these have always been the rules, we just haven't had the manpower and the time to enforce it. So it's um, I think it's just been a case to where things have just been going on for so long and now we're getting where we need to be and we can um, just follow up with the rules and the laws that we've put in place. So that's why it seems new. So we are hopefully, you know, still being nice to everybody, but I mean, the rules are the rules. And we wanna make sure that everybody's following the rules.
And we even put on here that we've called, so that the vendors don't have to, we've even had on here that we've coordinated with Parks and Rec. So they'll get with Parks and Rec instead of us asking them to get Parks and Rec to send us something. It's just a simple um, phone call which we've done in the past to Steve Masters in Alhorne and just say, hey, are they good together? They've done everything they're supposed to on your end? And they tell us yes or no and then we work together.
And then there's also um, there's also a checklist, I, I guess I now to come live with when I came out here the other day, that's um, a list of vendors that already have a business license in Silicaca.
We even provide that, but we do have it.
Laura, as someone who's hosting events constantly, I, I realize that this is going into place and I think we, we've never been asked to um, like the fireworks at the park. And so in crazy days, I, am I going to, I mean, is there a window when this is going to be implemented? For instance, we have crazy days coming up, maybe eighteenth and Christmas Open House.
And I thought, and I thought about that too and, and that is the one thing we may need to do because this is, this is how it should have been done. It hasn't been done this way, so maybe we need to implement this on a day. I don't know if we wanna start um, fiscal year, October?
It's, it's currently in the ordinance, um, but Laura um, does bring up a good point, as did Leah when I spoke with her on the phone earlier in the week. Maybe this is something that we could incorporate into their contracts.
That would make a lot of sense.
But, and then too, but the thing, yeah, because also we have been, we have been aggressive with this. I mean, we have been, you know, showing up in places and making sure that people do have the business license and people are doing what they're supposed to do. So again, this, this isn't new, but the aggressiveness isn't, isn't it? Because now we have people in place who are able to, to make sure these things are being implemented.
And I do have some events, excuse me, I apologize for words.
No, you're fine Laura.
I do have some events that are listed in my contract already. Um, and they might not be specific named events, but it says um, to promote retail development, which that's crazy days. Um, and it does mention um, for instance, uh, July Fourth Celebration, Labor Day Celebration, Christmas Parade, so.
And, and that does make sense, so maybe, um, I don't know who else would be like the A R C, um.
I mean, the Parks and Rec, they had to get, you know, the blanket.
We don't have a contract or anything with Parks and Rec, ma'am.
So they're, yeah, and theirs is um-
We have no contract with them, we just write them a check because we can't dictate all this money. Whereas with the Chamber, the ARC, and several others, we have contracts.
Steve, tell me how that works again, let's, let's put that up. So how does it work when you have your events? Um, we don't charge the Parks and Rec, but do, do the food trucks have to get business license when they have stuff? That's what I thought, we just don't charge the Parks and Rec, but the vendors still have to abide by these rules? We just don't charge Parks and Rec.
We have to come before y'all and get the special event permit.
But that covers once you got that.
Well, it does, but I mean, it also makes you plan something out, basically you're in advance. So you can't spontaneously decide, hey, we gotta open weekend here, let's do an event, nothing going on in Silicaca.
But what the same thing that we did receive, applause for Laura and Leah?
That would be, uh, deciding factor would be the city council. And that's why I said, we can write something in their contract. We can not ask the Parks and Rec to plan out a whole year.
No, they don't, that's what she's saying.
On, on behalf of the city, I certainly wanted to see these functions happen to benefit retail sales downtown. Isn't it possible to give uh, these entities such as the Recs, such as uh, the Chamber, um, the A R C that we have city contracts with, can we not give special exemption?
That's what we were gonna say, yeah.
To, to them, to put it in those words.
Yeah, we've already done it, that's exactly what we're saying. Yeah, so Steve already gave one and that's what um, we worked out with Laura. And forgive me, I didn't even think about your stuff, um, I know you weren't gonna let me forget about it though, but yeah. So who else is like that? So is the Parks and Rec, is the Chamber?
The Parks and Rec doesn't have a contract to be in, that's why they come to the council and we do everything at one time.
So what about the Chamber and the A R C? Who else, who else is like that, that holds a, hold, is that the only two?
The museum.
Museum does-
But if the museum would treat her like we treat the um, Parks and Rec?
No, museum, we have a contract with her.
Yeah, they would fall into the parks, bring in A R C.
You're asking for a list of who falls under contract?
The only people we don't have a contract with are the library and the Parks and Rec.
Let's just get a list of the entities or the departments that falls under the C. And we could just incorporate this into their contracts, but anybody else?
Yeah.
But Laura, you can't come and hold one and get a blanket exemption.
Right, right.
If that makes sense. So maybe that's a line item that we need to add into those contracts, the ones that fall upon their um, facility. Alright, so that's, we good ma'am?
She, she said-
I am.
Two little typos.
Perfect.
Oh, hello.
Coming by the ordinance, she mentioned um, the ordinance. The ordinances aren't published where people can see it. Is there a way that we can get the ordinances published? Because the last published one was in twenty fourteen.
Really? That's because we haven't put any media in good, so that's not something that has been published on the city website ever. So the key would be subscription and good.
Alright, which we do have, we do pick one.
But we haven't public, we haven't updated it.
No, we haven't.
Since twenty fourteen?
Yes sir, since twenty fourteen.
Let me ask you this, um, I don't know how long it's gonna take you, do you think you can get that um, get those contracts amended, thirty days?
We have the contracts ready right now for the entities.
And you can just go in and just add, add that line item in them?
Do you want that this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
Um, it's gonna have to be next, next fiscal year or have we-
They just sign the contract?
Yeah, they're just, yeah, they're just signing contracts for five months.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they don't sign the contract, we can't um, give them an appropriation.
Well, that, you know, so we'll just get that-
We can reach out to, um, I know me and Laura, we work together, everybody in here works together really well with us in the clerk's office. Um, they can just let us know what they're doing. Um, I know that's what Ms. Allen did.
Alright, so-
And we worked with her and everything.
So on those, we're gonna make sure it's added to their contract so that they can be exempt when they hold their special event.
And then anything for the library and Parks and Rec, they'll have to continue to come because they don't have a contract for it.
I don't think Parks and Rec should have took up the forest.
They, they do it all, the Parks and Rec is, is the same thing they all, is it?
It's fun.
We don't have a contract because you appoint our board, right? We don't appoint their boards, so we don't have a contract.
Stevie, you have an issue with the way yours is set up, the, the way we've been handling it?
The special event, I don't.
But also check into what it would take to start up a media account, just to agree on.
Can you speak up?
Also, get to check into what it would take to start up a media account.
Yes, we've actually already checked into that. And our biggest problem, Mr. Perry, is staffing. We're still at fifty percent um, in no advance. That's not a priority, um, because of day-to-day operations that are overcoming and things like that.
But they can come in and get a copy of it in the morning too.
Yes, normally there's a fee, we have the Freedom of Information Act form. Um, Miss Eversen's aware of that, how to, that process. And then we do it, but yes, they have to pay for it because it's Freedom of Information Act request, sure.
We'll get that added to the list so we can get the um, the website updated.
Yes ma'am, Nicole, media code please, just write it down.
Alright, so number eight has been removed. We're gonna go on to number nine, discussion that's necessary by Brian Tong with Silicaca Christmas Club regarding plans for the twenty twenty-four Christmas holiday season.
First of all, thanks for uh, hearing us. Um, the Christmas Club has been actively meeting um, since the first year and after finishing the season last year, taking down the tree uh, and everything. I hope that you guys uh, thought that it was as great a success as we did. Uh, the community, I think certainly responded. Um, but I'd like to ask Laura if she would come and uh, speak uh, to the traffic that was generated just from the events that we did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, we did, we pulled data once again, um, um, Christmas Open House and then we also pulled data on the Christmas tree lighting and in the, for the Christmas Open House weekend, we pulled it from Friday through Sunday at the conclusion because people were shopping for Christmas Open House beginning on Friday. Um, we had seventy-five hundred people in downtown Silicaca, um, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday till about seven-thirty that evening when we concluded our festivities. Um, that's a very large number and um, I think sets the tone for our Christmas message in the community. The tree lighting, which was about a three-hour event, and this included Central Park where the Tinsel Trail was, as well as um, this area here at City Hall, we had eighteen hundred people. And if you recall, if you were able to attend and you recall, it was terrible weather.
It was.
Not Chamber of Commerce weather. Um, so considering the weather and that we had eighteen hundred people, again, thank goodness that we have this data to fall back on because I would never guess that number. And this is not, just let me clarify too, this is not people driving down the road. These are um, cell phone pings for seven minutes or greater. So they have to be in a position within the geographical area that I provide to them, which is, does not include roadways. So again, um, for Christmas tree lighting that Sunday evening in the midst of bad weather, we had eighteen hundred people. And that, those were the numbers we gathered for Christmas time, um, from the events that we had. And um, I just think that was phenomenal, um, and I'm glad that we had the Christmas decorations in place to begin that Christmas message.
That doesn't include the parade, did it?
Oh, no, yeah, you know, I had already reported to you, we had over, um, I think it was around six thousand people for the parade, which again was amazing, so.
Thank you Laura.
I'd ask uh, Tara if she would come and speak to um, on behalf of the county council and uh, I'd asked, uh, Tara if she would come and speak to, um, on behalf of the beautification council and, uh, the responders.
We had a great response to the, the, the Christmas Club, and if you don't know, the Christmas Club have, had different organizations that were represented. So I was representing the beautification council, we had the Magnolia Garden Club, we had the commission from Parks and Rec, from the Chamber, we had, um, just individual citizens that just wanted to be there and help with the Christmas decorations. So when we started out, we had no idea that we would have this much support from the city in general. We had enough donations, as you saw, to get that tree, and we thought that was a five-to-ten-year project to be able to get that. And so we were just, just excited to be able to have that much support from, from so many people in the community. And the beautification council, those funds are flowing through the beautification council, so we've taken over the responsibility of storing the Christmas tree, ensuring it, and all the decorations. So we have a shipping container that we bought, and, you know, we have all of that stored for the city. And these are commercial decorations, so they're expensive, but they're gonna be there and they're gonna look beautiful for longer than all of us are gonna live and be able to enjoy it. And so we just, as Brian will talk to you about our upcoming plan, but we just appreciated all the support from the city and hope to continue to have that support, and we appreciated everybody that came out and volunteered, and I'm sure you saw on social media, so many people are going out and getting pictures made in front of the tree and at the Tinsel Trail, and so many different parts of town. I mean, I saw a lot of kids going to dances and they go out and get their pictures made in front of the trees at the Tinsel Trail, and it seemed like it really brought the city together, so we were just excited and just happy to have our group, and, you know, under Brian's leadership there, to really get everything put together, so that we could all enjoy all the Christmas decorations. So again, thank you to the city for helping to do that.
Thank you for that information, I said, it's nice to know all those, um, big, nice, expensive things are being insured.
They're all in one spot, in their, in a safe spot, and, yeah, we have a great group of volunteers. We, we have a lot of people that really wanna help, so we put out the, 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 the big, hey, we gotta have some help, and everybody showed up, and we got the Christmas tree put up, and we got it put down, and it's stored, and it's perfect. And we've got so, I mean, we were able to get a lot, we need more, we might have to get another shipping container, but we're just gonna keep everything protected, make sure it stays there for the city.
And you're doing a good job, I'm telling you, people are singing your praises all through the town about that beautification council, and you've really made a difference, so...
It's a good group, we do, and it's not just me, we've got a whole great group, and we're, we're enjoying doing things for the city, so that's just a piece up, and we're just happy to be part of the Christmas club, too.
I know, we got our own holy trinity going on right now, so...
Um, I, I know that it's difficult, but we're looking at eighty-degree weather, right? To, to start, to, to think, well, I thought I would dress appropriately, and who can say no to Santa? I mean, you guys come up, um, but we wanna give, present this proposal to you, uh, uh, with the aim, of course, of continuing to enhance our community's festive spirit, um, and through the continued acquisition of more decorations, uh, to be able to do even more. What we'd like to ask you for is a contribution this year. Last year, you gave five thousand, this year, we'd like to ask you to commit to, uh, ten thousand, and I think we can openly say, that's pretty much where we wanna stay. We, we, you know, if we could just, and we're only looking to do that, uh, we're actually, right now, starting to discuss how we can assemble a five-year plan. So I think that's gonna come together, um, but as Tara mentioned, then, uh, these monies will flow through the beautification council. Right now, specifically, what we're looking to do, what we've discussed, is, uh, the intersection, this First, Second, and Third Street do not have power, so what we would like, you can't put a, a lit star there. So we'd like to do, put a forty-eight-inch wreath with a bow on each side, won't be lit, on, on each post, around, so it's four wreaths per intersection, or total of twenty-four wreaths altogether. Uh, we've discussed, uh, the, um, can't do anything across Broadway, but, um, uh, last year, the council, Nate, had gone, I forget where you went, but you saw, it had a lot of greenery on the pole poles and stuff, we discussed adding greenery, um, specifically, and putting perhaps an evergreen banner all the way across, maybe Norton, because we, because we can't do that on, on Morton.
And Broadway, just called, this is State Highway.
This is State Highway, we can't do anything, uh, up there. But now, it might be possible, uh, somebody gave me an idea yesterday, having Broadway to the end, we could possibly come down to the end of Fort Williams and go across Fort Williams, right there, at that busy intersection, where people make that left to turn on to, to Twenty One, that could be a possibility. Um, but that's something we can discuss later, but certainly, we'd like to add some more possibly available. Festive ornaments, uh, some more of our, everybody thought that the deer were a big hit, we're looking at some different things that we can, uh, do with those, and bring some of those on, they're, they're really affordable. Um, you're probably thinking, why is it important, why do we need to, uh, do this? Um, well, please understand that these decorations, they're, it's more than just something that's ornamental. Uh, they're symbols of unity, they're symbols of our city tradition, they enrich people's lives, create shared experiences within the community, it's important, uh, for people to have this time of year to come, uh, together. So you're gonna see several factors that are, that benefit from this, the nostalgia and memories that are made through these type of effort. I've already mentioned the unity and togetherness, family traditions are enhanced, as families now, uh, they're looking forward, they're already talking to, we've already got people contacting us, wanting to know how they could participate in the Tinsel Tree Trail this sea, or this season. We're actually enhancing it by, what did we say, fifty trees? We're, we're lengthening it by fifty trees, so, um, what else do we get out of it? Certainly, we've already demonstrated, we bring in, uh, uh, visitors, we see small business support, uh, we see the enhancement of our community of events, um, there's certainly long-term benefits to, uh, these impressive Christmas displays, as it creates, uh, an attraction, and, yeah, long-term, as we see in other cities, I'll use Andalusia as an example, uh, as a real tourist attraction, and draw, brings in a lot of money, uh, long-term. It's not something we can do tomorrow, but we wanna continue to invest into this from year to year. So I hope that you will, uh, consider making that a donation, donation.
I got a couple of questions, um, Brian, I know you said, um, the city gave five thousand last year, and you're, so you're asking for a ten thousand dollar per year allocation towards...
No, we're not gonna make that ask, no, we're asking for ten thousand this year.
Do you want an extra five?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have no guarantee of, of, of another five, so we just wanna make our ask at, at, at ten.
And you know, you said, you mentioned this year, you wanted to, um, to get some lights done downtown, and what else was it? You said it was some lights, because there was no power in a certain part?
No, no li, there's no, there's no lights on those poles at First, Second, and Third Streets, so because we can't do a lighted ornament like the stars up there, then we wanna look at, uh, doing forty-eight-inch wreaths, that'll be very impressive during the day, and of course, the street lamps will light those up, you'll be able to see them.
And that was some of the stuff, and that was some of the things you wanted to spend some of the ten thousand dollars on, correct?
Yes. And, and mobile, that, that, that...
Let me, let me ask you this, because we are in the middle of finalizing, um, the money that we have right now, what is, what would be the deadline on, to, I guess, what would you say the deadline is to get something like this, even if we weren't able to attend or however much money we decided to, yeah, what would be the deadline to get started, you guys to get started? Because we have a couple of things we need to finalize tonight, before we can even promise some money to anything else right now.
The manufacturers, uh, like to have their orders in, we were fortunate last year, uh, as a matter of fact, we actually got, I found out later, we got the tree, uh, because, uh, someone else, another city council did an order. And so they had actually had that tree in their inventory, um, but they like to have their orders in by July.
By July.
So we need to tell you something about the end of June.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 'cause we, I just, we can't say yair and ay now, we gotta finish up these final things on this budget, so it's not a no, it's just, we need, we need a little more time, we need to finalize the, um, the rest of this budget.
That's your second question.
Yeah.
Um, and if you look back, we spent, um, what was our total? We spent twenty, was it around twenty, or what?
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, about it.
You all contributed the five thousand, we gathered the remainder of that twenty thousand from our business and industry in the community, and, um, times are not so great right now for all of them, so the less that we can put that ask on them, and if they could see the city, um, contribute in a greater capacity, I think that carries volumes in their confidence in, you know, in, in what you all are doing, you're doing a great job, but it just increases that confidence level, and I, you know, I just hate right now, um, we have, our schools, our booster clubs are all asking business and industry for lots of money, and it's, it's, it's tough on businesses, and you know, ninety percent of our businesses are small businesses, so the more that we can do to offset that ask for them, the better. We, we agreed in our meetings that we weren't gonna make that ask this year. Um, there are gonna be people that want to give, but we're just not gonna put that ask on business and industry. Um, so we will be limited, if we're not able to get that, we'll be limited in what we're able to do, but in addition to the business and industry, it just increases that community confidence and that, that feeling of unity, and, um, that's part of what we're all here for, is for this community.
Love it, the tax, I mean, that's what we work for, the tax.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, thank you for your consideration.
And, and you guys, too, yeah, so I mean, you guys have done a really, really good job, I will say, the past few Christmases in Silicon have been really Christmasy, so they, they are appreciated, it's just...
I, I like that idea, because as Ms. Laura said, times are not the best for anybody right now, city council, business owners and whatnot, so if we go wait till the end of June, then...
So we'll, yeah, we'll get back...
And that's the reason, uh, uh, Nate, that we, we increased our ask, because it's difficult to put that burden back on those same businesses.
I, I get it.
And we get it, and we understand, but we'll get you an answer by the end of June, you know, we're trying to get this, we had a two-part budget thing this year, so this was kinda new to us, so we're gonna get through this, and then we'll, um, we'll get you an answer by the end of June.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you, guys. Next on the agenda is, um, number ten, discussion that is necessary regarding the city's participation in the back-to-school tax holiday, the third Friday in July each year, and ended at twelve midnight the following Sunday, and the severe preparedness tax holiday, the last full weekend in February of each year. And, um, Alex is gonna tell us how we can do this, so we don't have to...
Do it every year.
Do it every year, so it'll be just so on and so forth, since we do it every year.
So we're gonna have to come back to the council, you guys would actually approve it, and then we would send it to the Alabama Department of Revenue, and they would automatically do it every year, because it's always on the same timeframe.
Yes. Alright, okay. Uh, I hit this one, not on purpose, I missed number, um, I missed number seven, it's the, um, city council discussion on budget update to parking rec, I am so sorry. Um, yeah, hold on, let's do it.
And we're, we're mainly trying to organize and get things, because we're gonna have to pause at some point or other to try to get out, A, do a public hearing at six, and try to get out there and send the soccer team off when they drive down the road as well.
I wanna ask that everybody go outside with us, so we're gonna do like a little quick recess, go out, send everybody else, and then...
I'm sorry, because we're gonna head into the discussion, the public hearing, the pile of coal, and go to the next one.
So Steve, alright, so we're gonna go on to number eleven, discussion that is necessary by city attorney Edwin, um, Livingston regarding the assessment of cost paid by the city of Silicon to Toby Howard relative to Mrs. Anna Fagman on real estate and structure in the city of Silicon at five hundred West Spring Street, Silicon, Alabama, and so that said cost can be forwarded to the Office of Revenue Commissioner of Talladega County, so that the revenue commissioner can add that assessed amount to the ad, ad-borrowed tax bill on the house and real estate at five hundred West Spring Street in Silicon, Alabama. That was your answer.
Okay, I was tasked with making it able that we can, if that bond tax bill is paid by my owner, October first of, of this year, that the, this bill for thirty-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars will be included, and we'll be paid on that bill, or he can't pay his taxes. In order to do that, we had to have a hearing under state law, I sent him certified mail notice that the hearing was tonight at six o'clock, the owner, B N W M W Lands, haven't heard back from him, but that's all we had to do in that regard, and we were gonna be asking, uh, I will be asking, under items two and three of the agenda, that thirty-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars will be approved by the city as the proper bills for that, uh, work that was done by Toby and paid to Toby Howard, the contractor. And so we will be having a discussion of this when we come back after the break, and if you have any questions about the process, uh, we'd like to ask for that.
Okay, alright, thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
Alright, so, uh, I'm gonna go on, Steve, we're gonna push you in, hold on, you don't have to come up, we're gonna push you in the, um, the community's update, we're gonna put you together, because you'll have to still be a community, if that's okay, I'm sorry. So number twelve, discussion that is necessary by human resource, Jane, we need to update human, um, resources job description. And Jane, we did get your job description, we want to thank you so much for all the time and energy that you put into this, but I think we're gonna need a little bit more time just to look over it, so, um, we're gonna pause all of our questions that we have for tonight, and then we'll just, um, once everybody's ready, we'll just get this added back to a work session agenda to discuss it, if that's okay.
You're saying to Liam, Nate, or do you have...
I don't, I don't, but as soon as, um, as soon as we know, um, because everybody just needs a little bit more time, but as soon as we know, we'll let you know.
That's fine.
Thank you, Jane, we appreciate you so much. Alright, number thirteen, um, discussion that is necessary by, um, court clerk Amber Jones regarding staffing issues, and I think, um, Judge Far is gonna join Amber. We're not gonna rush out, but we're gonna have to stop at six for the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
One's a, one of these is a notification of the order I issued, uh, regarding judicial administration fund for a temporary file clerk, to help out with, you know, pay for, things like that, that'll be paid solely through the judicial administration fund at our discretion. Um, I talked with the clerk this week, and went over the numbers, we should be more than five of that, and we were looking at doing it at fifteen dollars an hour. The issue is, we're, we're down two people right now, we have four clerks, or four magistrates generally, right now, we have two, and then Amber's our department head, um, so that's really the necessity it is, we've got some advocates that are going through the process, we haven't, obviously hired anybody, there's, they gotta be tested, um, so we, we do have some perspective there that we think is, uh, good, um, however, with our current assistant court clerk and then magistrate, um, this was the request that we were having, there, in the existing budget, there's already been allocation for each of these clerk salaries, this department head doesn't count, these are just the magistrate and the, there's four of them, we've only had two, and these magistrate have to sign warrants on weekends, and go up to domestic violence here, get to jail, things that, you know, they're essentially on call, and what they've done it is, with four people staffed, you have one magistrate that's on call each weekend, well, right now, we're having to double it up. So this request was money that's already allocated in the, in the budget, that's already been approved by this council, but temporarily until we can fill the next two, two vacancies, if we can have a ten percent pay increase from twenty-seven forty, or, excuse me, from twenty-four ninety-one an hour to twenty-seven forty an hour for the assistant court clerk, and then the magistrate from nineteen thirty-seven an hour to twenty-one thirty-one an hour, uh, ten percent increase for the workload that they had to take on, since there's two vacancies. Now, it won't affect the bottom line of the city, the money's already allocated, it's just a matter of letting you guys know, so we can readjust that.
It's taken from the two salaries they're making.
And they can deal with the private office.
And we've done this before, in other departments, and, um, we do understand, and I don't...
How, do we need to stick any Google and civil service department handles? Yes, I mean, as far as, uh, I can't really speak to that, I would, that's a big yawn, man, um...
We didn't do it for the clerks, so...
I, I don't know, I don't know...
Civil service doesn't handle money.
I, I'm a private office clerk, so...
Oh, he's talking about the part-time position, not the, um, ten percent pay.
Oh, the part-time, the, no, it's, it's just a, it's just an independent contractor, we were gonna...
And they're paying, we're not paying, that's what he's saying, they're paying for it.
Have we, when, have we tried the ten-four thing? I know ten-four's...
Well, we, we, we've already contacted them, and, um, we're gonna do an equivalent, ten-four for some employees that they just contracted us, um...
That way, the ten-ninety-nine's are handled in one place.
And this is something that, um, Judge Far gives reports, and we're not paying for, it's something they're gonna, like you said, they're gonna do individual contracts, it's gonna come out of, um, not out of our money, so...
And ten percent's go already come out of budget.
It's already budgeted, yeah.
I, I don't have an issue with that.
I think we talked about two different things, just to make sure.
Yeah.
One is the ten percent for the two employees, and then there's a part-time.
Yep, but the ten percent for the two employees, that's coming out of budget and unfeels south. And that's what that's coming out of, and that's what we've done at your department, and I think we've done it somewhere else, so. And then the part-time thing, that's an individual contract that Judge Far is gonna enter into an agreement with someone, they're gonna do it ten ninety-nine, it has nothing to do with us and we're not paying for.
Correct, right. So what, I'm, I'm, I'm totally lost here. I'm assuming that you have, Amber, you haven't had many people apply, you're, I mean, if people are not applying, they're not passing the test, they're interviewing, they don't interview well.
A little of both, but when the last time it was posted is when there was the whole discussion with the education fund. So the original, the new pay plan had not been passed. So the last time it was posted was with the old pay. You don't get many people that come and apply for fifteen dollars an hour, so.
Okay, so who have we, do we have somebody now that we know of?
We have one applicant, um, but it was under the old, old paper.
So does it need to repost it?
Yes.
So how, how long does it take to get a job reposted since we got the new payment? Thirty, it's on the agenda for Thursday maybe. Okay.
Oh, we're taking steps, we're gonna get there. It's, it was just a, you know, just timely. Um, and obviously, when we fill the positions, that ten percent, it'll go back to the original, but you won't state that, state that way. Once, uh, once the two vacant positions complete.
Alright, well, thank you, um, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I think that's a no-arm-of-outrage situation for us, I, I.
Just wanted to bring to y'all.
And the money's coming from my U savings?
Yes.
Yes.
For the ten percent, is it temporary or come from the judicial admin?
So, um, now we're gonna take a time to pause the work session and start the council meeting, because we do have the, um, public here at six o'clock. So. Alright, so we're gonna pick back up on number seven. City council discussion on budget update to park and recreation. Alright, I know we talked about, um, yours the last time, and we're gonna, um, get these numbers finalized tonight, Steve. So what I asked Alex to do, guys, was go back, remember we added, um, remember we had that checklist where we deducted and we had our new balance? So we completely took you out, so we're starting the balance so that if you put the new number in, that will reflect our new bottom line, if that makes sense.
Because we initially calculated your own numbers.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes. Alright.
I guess my question is, you calculated numbers, but you never restored the twenty-twenty-three budget.
Right, yeah, and I think that's where, um, where the issue was.
And what the proposal was, was significantly less than what we were given in twenty-twenty-three.
Yes. So Alex, you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, so we got a new number, we got our new number. So once we leveled fund, once we put Steve back to level fund, and then we need to, um, get the additional, um, the additional amount for what he's requesting. This is how we're gonna decide what we're gonna actually approve as far as the additional, because of course, we do have to restore the level fund. That's where the issue is.
So we are going back to twenty-twenty-three budget of nine thirty-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
So what was the, um, we have a sheet right in front of us. What was the, um, what was the amount to get them back to, um, level funding?
Back to level funding was fifty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-seven.
That's what was taken from you, correct?
That's what was taken from us in October.
And this is what did not get calculated.
That's right.
In last time.
So that's done, and that's a, that's a guarantee, and then we just, we're discussing the extra that he's talking about.
Yes.
Uh, that he requested.
For the, um, yes.
So the nine thirty-seven is fifty-six.
Completes the nine thirty-seven.
Completes.
That includes.
Fifty-six is in the nine thirty.
Yes, that's in.
That's to get us where we were before budget cuts.
Yes.
Right.
And then I had another question too, Steve, and, um, I feel a little crazy, 'cause nobody knows what I'm talking about. In the original, um, budget request, you asked for, there were some other things that you asked for. It was like forty-seven thousand dollars of stuff that you asked for, right?
So we asked for pay adj- adjustments, and you know, we had that put together long before the city even talked about it. Because historically, our employees have never been on a pay plan whatsoever. It's basically, we go up and you work here and you wait for a cost of living adjustment, and sometimes Parks and Rec gets it, and sometimes Parks and Rec doesn't get it. So what we tried to do, and I've talked to the board and all this was approved, we discussed this for like three months. And finally, we got something put together. Basically, we took your old pay plan. And you know, the one that's every two years is a percentage raise, not your new pay plan. We took the twenty-twenty-three municipal survey that showed all the, the salaries from other departments within Alabama. And then we plugged those jobs into your old grant, and that's what we presented to y'all. And when we did that, that number came up to forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six hours and sixty-six.
For twelve months.
That's a twelve-month number.
Now we're discussing right now to implement.
Well, yeah, and.
Or whatever.
So that pay adjustment for us was ten percent, basically.
And, and that's, and that's what I was thinking, so, um, so that number, that number divided by twelve times five.
Twenty-one to fifty.
Twenty-one to fifty.
That's the number we're discussing. And in my easiest way to me, Steve may not agree, I don't know, but if our department did it, other departments have done it, is to take that twenty-one to fifty, add their earmark funds.
But, but there's still something else that he asked for. I know I'm not crazy.
The other was inflation.
Uh, no, it was something else, it was like some.
The playground equipment.
Yeah, it was the playground equipment, you had that on there too, because it was like forty-seven thousand. So I am crazy.
I have my original.
But I could've swore you asked for, um, there was some stuff that was a one-time cost that you had to, um, take care of at the parks. And that's what we were talking about, you use your earmark funds to take care of that, and we absorb the, um, the additional money for the, um, the salaries.
But either way, we'll, we'll absorb it next year, no matter what.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, the, the only thing that we have out there currently is the ten thousand dollars, and it's actually on your list to be approved in your invoices this time. Where we actually finally painted and we're working on the South Island.
Okay, well, I mean.
Other playground equipment, we've always paid for in house.
There was, there was something related to compliance.
It, it was, I, I, well, it's okay, you're not asking for any additional, that's fine, we're not gonna.
So the.
We are, I mean, we're currently working on, um, we've already talked to people, we're trying to upgrade the playgrounds at every park with the new tax money. And you know, in our, in our opinion, you know, the, the tax money that was put aside, that's paid for by the citizens, new tax increase should go to capital. So we're, we're, we're looking to make improvements and replace the playground at Noble Park. So I, I know where the conversation's going about taking the, the raises out of that tax increase. And if that's what we have to do, I mean, at this point, whatever, you know? But keep in mind, you're, you're making that playground for the citizens less.
But what, but, but taking twenty-one to fifty one time.
Sure. Our current ballots, last time I asked, was like one thirty-seven.
Okay. And also too, we're gonna have to have a, um, another conversation about that, that allocated tax money. Because from my thought, we, um, gave that money because we're gonna, um, build a new, the plan was to build a new facility. And we had to make sure we had money for maintenance and upkeep. So a certain percentage of that money needs to go over here for those things. You know, of course, you still need to be able to plan and do this and that, but some of that money is still needs to go over here for.
And, and, and that is ultimately the goal, but you know, we have, we have a presentation tonight, and then I've been talking around, kinda like a timeline. If y'all approve for the architects to go ahead and draw plans, you're nine months out. Then it's gotta go to bid, then it's gotta go to construction, that's a year and a half. So our goal was over the next two years to upgrade all the playgrounds during that time. And that way, when it comes time to pay for this new building and occupy this new building and do things there, then that money can roll straight into that budget.
But we still need to be saving a percentage of it for that, you know.
Well, currently, according to your resolution, it doesn't roll over until we all change that resolution.
So Alex, with these, with these two totals, what, where are we?
You're in the hole twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents.
That's if we paid for it.
But we paid for it. So what if we take the twenty-one thousand fifty, twenty-one thousand two fifty out of the, um, allocated money?
Then the city's only gonna be in the hole one thousand seventeen dollars and forty cents.
What, we're, we're gonna be in the hole?
One thousand seventeen dollars and forty cents.
But I, I don't, I, I don't, I think that's, I think, I think that thousand dollars in the hole's gonna be fine, 'cause it'll, it'll replenish the next couple of months. And, um, I know you asked about, um, you asked for some additional, um, monies, but I don't think, I think we're gonna have to revisit that in October.
Well, and I was looking at that and, you know, talking about these tax dollars, a lot of that additional money, we can, we're gonna now be coming to y'all to these things to use that tax money for, we're traditional, we've always done that in-house, and we can manage that until the budget is straightened out.
Okay, well, I appreciate you.
Well, I gotta, let's get, Steve, and don't get mad at me, we're in the hole a thousand, do we have to give the whole fifty-six back right now? Because one, we got five months left.
I know, but each month is gonna replenish itself.
And, and the plan is.
Fifty-six is divided by twelve, multiplied times what's left, right? It's not, you're not giving me fifty-six thousand dollars.
I got that, I, I, I agree there. I didn't, we're, we're in the hole today if we do it a thousand dollars.
I don't need to be in the hole here.
So Alex, that makes sense. Okay, so the fifty-six, um, the fifty-six. No, that is, but then.
Divided by twelve times five?
It's the whole fifty-six.
Is that for the whole fifty-six?
Yeah, it's the whole fifty-six, it is, it's the whole fifty-six, and it's twenty-one to fifty is the increase. But even if we do it now, even if we approve this, take this out of the sales tax money, we're in the hole a thousand over the next five months, hopefully. Because we just can't approve anything else. You see what I'm saying? Nothing else, no, nothing else can come to be approved.
But with the inquiries, because it's just such an unprecedented time, where we have new monies coming in, and we don't have a trend on it, would that not be safe to say that that a thousand will be replenished next month, next year?
Which right out, the first four million is already allocated to the courts, and you're only at one point five million right now, so we're gonna get the first four million, we need to come up with three point five million.
In five months.
In five months.
And this.
Can we just change the number that you're taking out of our sales tax to twenty-two instead of twenty-one, and that fixes your problem?
To balance, to balance the budget, Alex, so that when we're not in a hole.
So out of this earmark money, Steve, it's my understanding that you're asking for twenty-two thousand, two sixty-seven point four.
I just want y'all not to get. I actually made a recommendation that we take the raises for the next few months out of the tax money, which puts y'all in the red, so why don't you add a thousand of that?
So whatever, whatever's left in our budget, we take that and the rest comes out of the earmark money.
Yes.
That's, that's how.
And then we're not in a hole, correct.
And then.
There's twenty-one to fifty plus a thousand seventeen.
Right next year.
Out of earmark.
And then to moving forward, guys, I don't, um, know if you all agree, but once we, once we do the budget, unless something's on fire or it's an emergency, we don't need to keep approving stuff throughout the year.
We're, we're done spending.
Yeah, because the budget is the budget, and once you balance that budget, you really, I mean, you're really not balancing it if we're gonna approve something on every event.
And they'll, they'll have the earmark ones to do those.
And then the people who don't have earmarked money, I'm assuming we just need to find it and come to the council and re-allocate?
This way we can.
So that's it?
Yeah.
Twenty-two seventeen, out of earmarked, that gives you the twenty-one to fifty.
Alright.
And restoring twenty-twenty-three's budget.
Correct, fifty-six thousand. Sound good?
Yes, so Nicole's gonna have, Nicole's gonna, um, go and get that, so we can add it. So now we're ready to move on to the, um, park and recreation, the, um, aquatic center presentation.
They're gonna have to set up, so it's gonna take us.